Welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting, June 17th, 2019. We'll start the business of the meeting with signing of the warrant.
So moved?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, I'm going to break up these meeting minutes. Approval of the minutes for June 30th, 2019. And before the members make motions, I just want to note, there's a typo, page two, section 8.3. Just has our town misspelled, so that could just be corrected. Again, page two, section 8.3.
These are the June 3rd meeting?
June 3rd.
Yeah.
Regular meeting minutes.
So moved?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I'd also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have executive session. Meeting minutes for May 28th, June 3rd, and June 6th. We'll take them as a bundle unless somebody has exception or would like to discuss one of them.
So moved?
And I would make that, second that as well, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and I'll vote in favor, and that's unanimous. Next, we have invitation to speak. Is anybody here for invitation to speak who's not on the agenda? All right, not seeing anybody. We'll move on to public hearings. First, we have Ty Tran doing business as Lucky Nine for a transfer of license. Welcome, and I'll let you introduce yourself and your clients.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Suzette Ferreira. I'm here from the firm of Consigliere and Brocato. I'm here tonight with Cassia Viana and also Ty Tran. Ty Tran owns Lucky Nine Billiard Bar, and Ms. Cassia Viana is looking to purchase the business and take that over. So we have filed this application today, not only for a transfer of license, and also for a common, a new common vitueller's license in the town of Milford. What my client is looking to do is, she's looking to change what's there now a little bit. Right now, it really is a bar with the pool tables and things of that nature. She wants to incorporate more of a restaurant feel to the business. She wants to be able to serve breakfast, lunch, and dinner. She is planning on downsizing the number of pool tables that are in there now. I believe there's four pool tables in there now. She's probably eventually only going to have one because it is a smaller type space, and she'd like to make more room for tables and chairs and seating in order to be able to serve food. So with that in mind, we have also asked that with her new application to extend the hours of the business from 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. on Fridays, and then 5:00 a.m. until 1:00 a.m. Sunday through, Saturday through Thursday. We're also asking that the hours of the times that she can serve alcoholic beverages remains the same as it is now with the current license at Lucky Nine.
Okay. I just want to, what I'm trying to do is see if the paperwork has caught up with what you just said. Because we want to make sure that we approve, and I want to apply a process to this. Rick, do you have the change in hours, or?
Let's see.
What I have is an application to transfer, basically. No additional information.
Don't know if the change in hours is listed on there.
Yeah, it wasn't part of the application.
I did submit, do you have a copy of the, of this application ready?
I do not.
I did submit this. But I could have it right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Yeah, just give me a moment, this is the first time I'm looking at it. Take a peek at that while I'm there. So you're looking to stay open for live performances. I want to understand the difference between sale of alcoholic beverages and hours of operation. Is there any difference, and if you could explain that?
There is. So because they want to be able to serve breakfast in the morning, they want to be able to open at 5:00 a.m. so they can get the restaurant ready for breakfast. But obviously, we're not looking to start serving alcohol at that time. So we would keep the current hours for serving the alcohol the same as they are now with Mr. Tran's license, which I believe you can start serving at?
Eight.
Eight a.m.
You know, the challenge I have is, we go out to department heads for each application. And what I don't have is your second application. I'm trying to figure out how to work through this for your benefit. With department heads and chiefs sign off on the second application.
Yeah, I don't know that they would be involved in just opening early. I think there was something in addition to that they would.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not struck by it either, I just.
Yep.
I don't want to sound bureaucratic for folks that want to start a new business, that want to expand that business. So, what we'll do, the board members have had a chance to look over some of the documentation. Do you have two pages there?
Mm-hmm.
Here's the third page. This is somewhat new. So I'm going to take, I'm going to take the application for transfer of license first, and license application for modification, second. Okay, does that work for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just want to break it up, process.
So I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of license?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'll, I'll make that unanimous.
Thank you.
And I'll also make a motion to transfer the common vitueller with the new hours as requested.
Let me open that for discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Please. Could you please run down the hours of operation again?
Sure.
It's kind of confusing on your application there.
Sure, I'm sorry.
Monday through Thursday.
So, yeah, thank you.
No problems.
So what we're looking to do is, Monday through Sunday, 5:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. And then Friday, 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
And if I may ask, why 2:00 a.m. on Friday? What's the difference between Friday and Saturday, for example?
I believe just with the town, that's the latest that it can stay open on Fridays, which is an hour later than the rest of the week.
It's all our restaurants and bars now.
Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, I'm good, Mr. Chairman, I would second it.
All right. I would also vote in favor, so that's unanimous. Thank you for taking the time to walk us through that. We didn't have the application in front of us.
I apologize.
No, 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 no. No, stuff happens. And it's not always a fault of the town, it's not always a fault of the applicant, sometimes it's a cross, cross out. Because I know there are a lot of things that folks have to do, attorneys have to do, clients have to do in preparation. This is a public hearing, though, so I just want to read some things and give folks the opportunity to speak. So it's customary, as you know already from previous times here, that we go out to the department heads and look for feedback. The building commissioner, no issues, violations, and the building and bathrooms are within code. Town planning says there's no change of actual use, therefore, there's no concerns from the town planner. Tax collector, no outstanding taxes, which is a big deal for some. Town treasurer, no concerns, no liens. Fire chief, approved, no issues and concerns from the police chief. So, that's quite favorable from the various department heads. Given that this is a public hearing, is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this topic? All right. If not, you have your two votes. We want to wish you a lot of luck in your new business venture, and thank you to your counsel for presenting it in the way it was, and having the application available. So thank you, and lots of luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Very welcome.
Thank you.
Suzette, good luck.
Thank you very much.
You want to take this, or do you want, actually, we want to give this to Rick. It's the master application.
I'll be having it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Canvas and Cup requesting a seasonal license. Welcome, counsel, and I'll let you introduce yourself and your client.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen, I'm very pleased tonight to be here with Massa Gavamian. I don't think I butchered your name this time.
There you go.
I typically do. You may remember Massa from our town meeting where she successfully petitioned the town to recommend that the legislature take up special legislation for the purpose of awarding her a malt beverage and wine license to serve. And this is in furtherance of her business, her paint and sip business, where she schedules events at her art studio, she instructs people on how to paint fine arts with acrylic paints, and then serves them a glass or two of wine during the process, for delts only, on, you know, per scheduled event. In the interim, what we have done is we have put before the board a completed application for a new seasonal license. There are no quota issues with the seasonal licenses here in the town of Milford. And the idea is, knowing that it may take some time for the special legislation to work its way through the House and the Senate, we do want to keep Massa in business throughout the summer. And so, we have put forward a new application for a seasonal license with the intent of either converting or surrendering that license. I've been in contact with the A B C C. They're familiar with converting licenses per legislation, per the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen. They're also comfortable with surrendering licenses and having, you know, new licenses issued. Massa's willing to pay the license fee if that's what they require. She's also happy to do whatever is necessary to make the transition as smooth as possible. She has no intent to hold two licenses at any point. This is merely a stopgap measure to try and keep us in business until that full license is approved by the legislature.
I appreciate your introduction and your background. Folks of, the members of the board have, have the application in front of them, I'll go to them to see if there's any questions.
No, I think Patrick answered, answered mine during his presentation. This makes sense to get her through that time period where you don't have a license.
Okay.
And with town meetings voting for it overwhelmingly, I think it's pretty clear.
No questions or comments. Given that it's a public hearing, what I'll do is I'll also go back to department head review form. No concerns relative to building commissioner, no concerns from town planner, no further site plan review required, no outstanding taxes as indicated by the tax collector, no treasurer liens. Fire chief approved, and police chief issued, commented no issues or concerns. So with that, given it's a public hearing, I'll reach out to the members of the audience to see if there's anybody here who would like to comment on the license application. Not hearing anyone. Is there any last questions or comments before the board votes?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Is it, is it, I want to try to give some guidance. Is it, are you, it's, you indicated you were comfortable with surrendering of license once the other application, once the other applications process is complete. So what I'd ask the board is to see if we could take that approach and see if we could get a motion in that direction, if that works for the members of the board.
Certainly, I have a problem with that. I'll make a motion to approve the seasonal license for Canvas and Cup LLC.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman. I would just want to make it.
Yep, and I'll just add the, just try not to be so wordy about it, just add the fact that when the, when the full license comes in, that you'll surrender the seasonal.
Second. Yes. I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. And that completes the public hearing. So nice job, counsel, and lots of luck to you and your, your new venture.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Makes me want to take up painting. I sent that at a town meeting.
Glad to meet you over here.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not sure anybody would want to see the painting, but.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing for West Street Autobody for a Class II license. Welcome, counselor. I'll let you introduce yourself and your client.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Eli Lano from Mayor Antonellis-Jackowitz in Heranis, and I'm joined tonight by Luis Santos Jr., representative of the applicant. The West Street Autobody is working on opening up an autobody shop at the location on 69 West Street. Earlier this year, the zoning board allowed them the change of use. It had been Weather Shield previously, but throughout a lot of the history and predating zoning in this town, it was an auto sales location. And also, site plan approval through planning board did allow the sale of up to 20 cars. So that's what we're trying to apply here tonight would be for a Class II license from this board. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have about our application.
No, it's a public hearing, so what I'll do first is I'll go to members of the board, see if they have any comments or questions. Will, any comments or questions?
No, no, no comments or questions. This is the property that was Berardi for many, many years.
This was.
Okay. Okay. All right, yeah, no, no questions. You did planning, you did ZBA, everything was approved. Okay.
Yeah, change of use was approved by ZBA and the site plan showing the location for the cars to be sold and other cars to be parked, et cetera, was all approved.
Okay, and that was for the maximum of 20?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And here it indicates on the department head review form that there are taxes owed, but I have a note here after speaking with Rick that he received that payment in full?
Yes, today, all the taxes were brought up to current.
Okay, and just in case that came up, I just wanted to say that, because we all have that in our packet. Okay. Mike, any comments or questions?
Just question only because we have two applications from you tonight. This is the 69 West Street we're talking.
Correct.
Okay.
West Street Autobody.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually, I happen to be very familiar with that property, and my uncles used to own and build that property. So, yeah, I used to hang around there as a young child. Okay. You know, when I first read the application, I was actually surprised they allowed so many vehicles on the property. It's a lot of vehicles for that frontage. They allowed it, and the only thing I can say is, or ask is, are you aware of the conditions? Are you comfortable with the conditions? And I'll speak through you, counsel, because, you know, frequently with Class II licenses, people are exceeding their limits. It's not uncommon to have, to go by at any given time and see 30 unlicensed vehicles on a property that was approved for 20. So I'd only ask you to take, you know, care and make sure that you're mindful of the, your client's mindful of the restrictions as allowed by the ZBA. Because I get a fair amount of complaints on two things. One, the number of Class II licenses available in Milford. And number two, the adherence to, to the zoning conditions. So, please use care and caution and try to meet the conditions of the, of the permit.
Absolutely, and on behalf of my client, we'll certainly take that to heart, and we do understand the constraints of the space, and that different boards in this town have made abundantly clear where cars can be placed and where unlicensed vehicles and the limits. And as you saw in our applications, for up to 20. This is primarily an autobody shop, not a car sales lot. Obviously, there's certain things where sometimes cars for insurance purposes need to be deregistered and sold, to things like.
Mechanic liens, all kinds of things, right?
Exactly. So it's a situation where they're going to be running a business, hopefully incredibly successfully out of this location, and a side portion of that will be using this Class II license to keep cars moving off the site. But at no point will we exceed that 20 that the, the board hopefully will allow us to have licenseded.
Okay. Well, with that, we'll reach out to the audience first to see if there's any public comments related to the public hearing. Not hearing anyone or seeing anybody step forward. I'll go to the members of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Class II license for West Street Autobody Inc. at 69 West Street.
I would second that as well, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'll also vote in favor, and that is unanimous.
Thank you all.
Lots of luck at that location.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing for Master Collision Care Inc. for a Class II license. And I'll let you introduce what's happening there and the purpose of the application.
Again, for the record, Eli Lano from Mayor Antonellis-Jackowitz in Heranis. This location is actually 1.9 miles up West Street on 140, Upton, on the Upton line up there. And Master Collision Center currently runs a location just over the line in Upton, and realized they could come to a better business environment and a better location and move down to Milford. So we are working on moving that operation to this location, which they have under contract in a purchase and sale agreement contingent on permitting, and we've gone through the zoning board and granted up an allowance to use this, special permit to use this for this auto use. The location previously had a two-bay garage, which we'll be using, that was used for auto detailing, so it's been automotive uses. And if you're familiar with that portion of West Street, it's a number of smaller automotive uses and repair and sort of Class II type uses around. And then, the planning board did do site plan review and allowed 10 spaces on this. And it's another location that I think would be well-suited to hold this, where, again, the primary use will be auto repair. But again, certain times, they'll need to be able to sell vehicles.
And who are you purchasing the property from?
I believe this is owned by APO Building Incorporated, which is Hario Hinesian's, one of his operations.
Okay, for the benefit of the public, I'll go through the department head review form. Building commissioner indicates handicapped accessible, no violations, fully accessible. Town planner, number of unregistered vehicles not to exceed 10, as you indicated, counselor. Tax collector indicates outstanding FY '18 property tax in excess of $15,000, and FY '19 property taxes owed to the town in excess of $14,000. Town treasurer says there's no outstanding liens at this time. Fire chief indicates that must pull all appropriate permits for flammable storage as applicable. Police chief notes no issues or concerns. And so, counselor, what's your suggestion for the board on how to recoup this outstanding taxes owed by the current owner?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to speak to that, and I first want to thank Mr. Vilani for taking the time to contact me about that, and also in his letter, letting me know that should be paid in full before this hearing, and that it's the responsibility of the applicant to remind all other parties of this obligation. We're in the bit of a tricky situation in that I, of course, don't represent the owner of this property, but only the potential buyer under this purchase and sale agreement. My hope would be that if we could grant this license contingent on those taxes being brought to, brought to current, my hope would be that the money used in the purchase price of this could be used to clear those, and that's something that could be added into the contract for purchase and sale. Because obviously, my client in buying land doesn't want to start in a hole with taxes. But again, this is property that they do not own yet, but are under contract to own. They didn't accrue those taxes. And again, from the town's standpoint, I understand the need to collect revenue from whatever source derived, which there is a hole here, and that is something that we will make every, not, not every effort, we will get that cleared up if they can buy this. But the permitting process is another contingency of this purchase and sale agreement. So somehow, in between, the taxes need to be closed for us to get this license, but we need to have this license to go through with buying it, because I don't want to put my client in a situation where they end up with property to run an auto repair center without being able to run an auto repair center. So I hope I didn't just talk everyone into a circle, because it felt like that.
No, I got it. You know, it's a challenge for members of the board, to be honest with you. You know, for the vast majority of taxpayers, they pay their taxes. They've asked us a lot. I've been asked recently why permits are being given out when people owe back taxes for builders. That's come up. But I'll go to the members of the board, see if there's any comments or questions.
Mr. Chairman, my only comment is that I would have made the motion only with that contingency in place, so I certainly don't mind giving the current owner and the potential buyer working something out so that nearly $30,000 can be paid. So I would only support the motion if it's contingent upon the taxes being paid prior to the license being issued.
Mike?
Couple of questions. So on your application displaying up to 10 cars for sale, but on the application from the town, it says proposed, proposed number of vehicles to be sold, 10. Proposed number of vehicles on site, 30.
Is that a typo, Rick? Registered versus unregistered?
Right, exactly, that was my question.
Yeah, that's as part of site plan, and those have been the approved numbers, it's that.
Total.
Total would be more than 30 cars, whether or not they can drive, and whether or not it's employees who brought them, customers, et cetera. And you're probably familiar with this site, but it's the built, there's the, the former daycare facility, which my clients have no desire to run a daycare out of that. But in terms of parking spaces, there are the two buildings there, which is why it seems like a little bit of a higher number than you might expect for a two-bay garage.
Right, but just for the, the public viewing, is it, the 10 vehicles is the number of vehicles that'll be for sale?
Yes, sir.
Maximum?
Absolutely.
Maximum amount of vehicles to be on the property is 30?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, as approved through site plan review would be that we could have 10 cars, up to 10 cars for sale. There's no requirement that we would keep 10 cars to be sold. Sometimes, there might not be any, might be one or two. But yeah, in the same that we talked about in the previous hearing, they're, they're not going to go beyond whatever it is that the town sees fit to allow for sale, and the request is for 10.
Okay. And, and I as well, I would second Mr. Kincaid's motion, as long as the license is held by the town of Milford until the back taxes are paid.
Okay. Okay, Will, would you like to make a motion?
Yep. Make a motion to approve the application for Class II license for Master Collision Center at 288 West Street in Milford, contingent upon the total number of taxes for FY '18 and FY '19 be paid in advance.
Second. All right, and before we complete that, hold your thoughts, because it is a public hearing, I need to go out. I don't think there's anybody here, but I'll ask, because that's my responsibility. Given this is a public hearing, is there anybody that would like to speak on this topic? Okay, not hearing anyone. And I do want to, before I complete the vote, I know that it's pending. Excuse me. Oh, I already read from that, so we, we read the amount that was owed, and you heard from the other department heads. Okay, so to complete that motion, I'll also vote in favor, so that's unanimous. And that is, to be clear, contingent upon the back taxes being paid completely. Okay?
Thank you very much, and on behalf of my clients, thank you for your time tonight, gentlemen.
Have a good night, Eli.
Thank you.
Take care, Eli.
Okay, that takes care of the public hearings. Next, we'll go to scheduled appointments. I apologize for the delays with all the public hearings, but I will go to a joint meeting with the Milford Housing Authority. And I'll read from a note that was sent to the board from town administrator Rick Vilani. As confirmed by the election council at the State House, the Board of Selectmen are required pursuant to master general law, section 41, I'm sorry, chapter 41, section 10, to vote to place this office on the ballot, April 7th, 2020, local election position for the unexpired term. The board must occur, the board vote. The Board must occur, the Board vote must occur. Before the Town Clerk can make nomination papers available, not less than 15 days before the day to submit. Further, regarding the filling of the position for Milford Housing Authority, should the Board fill this position on the June 17, 2019, meeting pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 11, the individuals so appointed will serve on the Milford Housing Authority until April 6, 2020. Now, the process for this, and this is a process filled by former member Lori Ann Brazza, is through a joint vote by both Boards. So, for the purposes of the joint meeting, I'll chair that, but I'll ask for any nominations. Are there any nominations that somebody would like to make?
I nominate Patrick Holland.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the topic? Okay, so I'll ask for a roll call vote. I'll start with the Members of the Board of Selectmen, Will.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I'll also vote in the affirmative as aye. I'll go to the Members of the Housing Authority.
Okay. Kathy Consiglio, aye.
Mike Diorio, aye.
Edward Orelli, aye.
Patrick Holland, Mr. Chairman, I ask to be recused from this vote as I am presently a member of the housing authority.
Okay, so that leaves us with six in favor, one recusal. Congratulations, Mr. Holland, officially, to make this official, and I wish you a lot of luck. And, do you need a vote to...
I just need a vote to place the position on the April 7, 2020 election ballot.
I'll move that. So, move to alert the Town Clerk to place this position on the ballot for the April 7, 2020 local election. Is there a second?
I would second that.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Better get your signs ready, Pat.
I already have them. I ran for this twice already. I think this is going to be three times on the ballot for this position in five years.
I've got to say, Mr. Chairman, this has got to be the first time for me in all these years, anyway, that we appoint someone who's already serving on the Board to another seat because of the interesting position the state put you in. So, that seat's going to be vacant, technically, until they figure out how to appoint a tenant.
So, the seat that I'm presently holding is called a holdover seat. And that holdover seat is, it exists because the legislature has undertaken an action to appoint a member, a resident of the Housing Authority, to the Board. They haven't figured out how to implement that yet. And so, the seat that I was holding was being kept warm because I was the last member into the Housing Authority. And so, therefore, I would be the first seat that would go. And then, when we had a member resign from the Board, it left a regular seat that was open. So, that holdover seat is now open and available for a resident of one of our housing facilities if the, should the legislature decide that they determined that there is a way to effectively appoint that person.
Okay. I appreciate the clarity in which you gave that update. Because it is, dealing with the government frequently, it's interesting how they'll enact a law, not enact a process or rules by which to follow, so there's no way anybody can execute and be compliant with the law other than to have holdover positions.
I think you highlighted it perfectly, wherein we have a great idea. Let's have a member, a resident, on the Board.
Sure.
Who elects them, who runs the election? Are they appointed? Who makes the appointment? It's just, it hasn't been worked out yet.
All right. So, I appreciate it, and thank you. Next, we have an application for common vitular amendment to an existing license. The business name is Bread Bowl Cafe. Business address is 319 and 1/2 Main Street. Hours of operation, Monday, Tuesday, Friday, 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. Tuesday and Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I'm sorry, I already said Tuesday.
Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday. You know what? It says Tuesday scribbled in underneath that.
Yes.
Wednesday and Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The applicant is Adasha Rose from 18 Cedar Street. Let me go through the rest of this application to see if there's any change of DBA from existing name Bread Bowl Cafe to new name Karma Cafe. It seems pretty academic here. We have a department head review form, which indicates pre-existing nonconformity, no accessible, not accessible, and no violations. Town Planner, name change only. No outstanding taxes, as indicated by the tax collector, no tax liens by the Town Treasurer. Fire Chief and Police Chief both have no concerns. The applicant's not here, but not required to be here. But should the Board have questions, we can hold an abeyance until the applicant comes forward, or if it's just the name change and the Board is comfortable with the application that they see in front of them, we can take a vote. It's up to the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve the amendment to the existing license for the name change only, going from Bread Bowl Cafe to the new name Karma Cafe.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I would also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Okay, next, we'll go to Town Administrator.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, on a number of items tonight. First, I want to finally report that the floors at the police station that were damaged due to the water overflow a few months ago have been completely installed. I want to thank Facilities Manager Carlos Benederman for overseeing this project. Just an update on the advanced green light at the intersection of Bedway Road and Beaver Street. Town Engineer Mike Dean has been working with Mass. DOT and Al Rossi of RD Management, the owner of the Milford Crossing Shopping Center, to change the phasing of the light to allow for advanced green light for the left-hand turn movement at that intersection. Mike has been working with them some time. I would recommend the Board consider scheduling Mike to review in detail with the Board and answer questions, the status of this advanced green light, at our next meeting. Third, our records management implementation. King Information System, Inc. is completing their work to implement the records management system at Town Hall. They have categorized all records at Town Hall and will be issuing a report to list records which can be destroyed with state approval. They have also implemented a computer program to allow my office to easily locate any document needed by any town department or, in turn, for a public records request. I want to thank all Town Hall employees, department heads, for their cooperation and assistance in implementing this system. And I just do want to add that it seems that everyone is extremely pleased with the outcome. Boxes have been removed from offices. Boxes have been stored where they can now be easily found. And again, we hope to be destroying a number of documents. Again, per state approval and per state sign-off. I also want to update the Board on the downtown facade program as we're reaching the end of June. We have completed fully three projects to date. We have commitments for three additional projects, with additional projects being reviewed as we speak. I have reached out to Senator Fatman and Representative Murray, seeking an extension of the appropriation for the downtown revitalization projects included in state budget for fiscal year 19. I want to thank Senator Fatman, as he brought my request to the Senate Committee on Ways and Means and the Executive Office of Administration and Finance. They advised him, and he has advised me, that any unspent funds would be included as a previous authorization continued in the closeout supplemental budget for fiscal year 19 in October, so that it is forwarded to the new fiscal year and not reverted back to the general fund. In addition, Senator Fatman has advised me, he has secured an additional appropriation of $70,000 in the state fiscal year 20 Senate budget for future downtown revitalization and economic development projects in the town of Milford. He will be reaching out to me regarding next steps once the budget is finalized and signed into law by the Governor. In conclusion, I do want to thank the Senator and the Representative, as both were instrumental in making sure that this project can go forward with no money reverting back to the general fund. And then, finally, Mr. Chairman and Board, I believe the Board is, as far as future meetings in July, the next scheduled selectman meeting will be Monday, July 8. We will not be meeting on July 1st, so we'll be meeting on the 8th and the 22nd in July. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Rick, before I go to the other members, I'd just like to, you know, publicly for the Board, thank our partners in the legislature, both Senator Fatman and State Representative Murray, for helping us secure these funds. I want to give a special thanks to Senator Fatman for including additional monies in the upcoming budget. I think the message is clear, both to the town and to the state and to our residents, that we're serious about not only ongoing facade and improvement programs, but generally, we want to be, this Board wants to be aggressive and use all tools available to help businesses. We know that it can be difficult, difficult economics, difficulty with taxes, difficulty with the burden of traffic, and a whole host of other things. But we want to, you know, send out the message to our business partners that we're open for business and we're available should any of the businesses need any help from this Town Hall. I'll go to the Members of the Board now. Any questions or comments for Rick's update?
No questions. Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Just a Rick, thank you again for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Next, we have old business. And the first thing we'll do is Scott Crisafulli has sent Rick a note asking about, which we knew this would happen. There's wear and tear on the flags and banners that we put on our poles. This was another part of a program on Main Street that Scott spearheaded as it related to improvement. The improvement, I think, is one that I've received positive feedback on from residents, talking about those banners and flags that they put up at various times of the year, including the holiday season. So, Scott is requesting that the Board of Selectmen make available $1,500 to $2,000. And what I would suggest is that we go ahead and make that available and consider the $2,000 number, just for purposes of any votes. And, you know, he indicates that this is, you know, there's clear linkage between this type of activity and all the work being done on the facade program downtown, and to have fresh banners and flags, rather than worn-out ones that we get too much use from, and it detracts from the whole process that we're trying to do. So, any thoughts or comments on the Board, any motions to support?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I fully support the $2,000. We start things like this, and then, again, we talk about government. Sometimes, we don't continue the follow-through or the maintenance, so let's stay on top of this. My only question is, are we pulling this money from a funding source, funding source from one of the TIF agreements, or, I'm sorry, not TIF?
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the TIF agreements? Is that something?
Yeah.
Something in mind, or does Rick?
I do. The Bio-Measure TIF has some funds available that would allow for this type of expenditure for downtown improvement, so it's within the scope of the agreement. Good question, though, and I apologize for not bringing that up on the front end of the discussion. Mike, any comments or questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to fund Scott's request for $2,000 for a new, fresh, for fresh banners and flags. And we fund that out of the Bio-Measure TIF account. And I'd also like to get a balance of that account for our next meeting.
All right, and Mike?
I would second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll also vote in favor, and that's unanimous, to use $2,000 out of the Bio-Measure TIF for updating of flags and banners. Nice job from that committee and Scott leading it. Next, we have a similar request, but for a different purpose. All lockstep in terms of furthering the community, community involvement. And it's a 4th of July committee request for funds for the amount of $5,000 for benefiting the celebration of our birthday, the United States, 4th of July. And this comes from Joe Calery, who's on that committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we fund the parade committee $5,000, excuse me, out of the Bio-Measure account.
Okay.
And before I second that, Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, if this is going, and maybe we need to bring the committee back in before us, but if this is going to be a yearly thing, maybe we should have them consider, you know, getting it into somehow into the budget.
Yeah, I've had discussions with them specifically on that topic. And so, what the request is, is that not only the committee, but this Board, consider backing for future discussion, we have future discussion on it, but backing a parade slash fireworks 4th of July fund and adding this dollar figure, or some dollar figure, to that for the next budget. So, Rick, is that a note that you can put down for the FY '20 budget?
Yep.
With that understanding, I would second the motion.
Okay, and I also would vote in favor. That's unanimous. Okay. Any old business from the Members? Will?
No, none for me.
Mike?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
I have one. And what I'm going to do is ask the favor of the Board. We had a one-time expenditure, similar to what we were talking about a minute ago, that I'd like to get built into the budget. But because this town, last town meeting, didn't have it included in the budget, I'd like to ask Rick, through the Board, through a vote of this Board, to go out for quotes on the parking lot at Sacred Heart and the weed program. That was a one-year, one-time expenditure, and we didn't build it into the budget through our omission. So, I wanted to get the thoughts and consensus of the Board to go out and get that weed program and parking lot improvement. Because if you notice, the barrier between the dental building and the parking lot, it doesn't take long for four-foot-high weeds to grow again. And people have done a lot, a great deal, in terms of investment and improvement in that lot, and it's in the center of our community. So, I'd like to get your thoughts. Will, I'll start with you.
Yeah, I think that the more things we can roll into our budget so that we can take care of things moving forward into perpetuity and not just making it a flash in the pan, I think makes sense. So, I certainly support that. I also wonder if there's, as we're going up Main Street, is there anything else that we should be going, that we should be attacking in addition to that? Whether it's pruning trees, whether it's, whether we reach out to the Parks Department, Chuck Renaud. I don't want to turn this into a whole big process, because I think we've made a priority at that park. It's right there as it enters.
And it's the weed program from 109 up to Water Street, if I'm not mistaken, Rick, right?
Right. Is that what it is? That includes all of that? Okay, then I'm pretty comfortable with that.
But there may be other areas. And so, when we have the next discussion relative to our budget, we should, why don't we, why don't I look to the Members of the Board of Selectmen to see if there's anything else that we want to include in that before we make, ask for a budget appropriation?
Sure.
Definitely should include what we had cleaned up last year, which was some stop and shop to basically Mighty's Kitchen intersection. We had that whole sidewalk done, so we should definitely include that in there.
Okay, so why don't we look at the quote we did last year and see if we can get a quote again?
Sure.
All right. And then, we'll figure out in discussion, I'll work with you, Rick, on what the appropriate funding mechanism might be for that. Okay. That's all I have for old business. Let's go to new business, appointments, reappointments. So, the Board members, I know the Board members have been updated, but I wanted to say this because this agenda went out to the public, and there was a typo. It indicated that on the Geriatric Authority of Milford, there was a typo having a former member on there, rather than the current member who's up for reappointment. Former member being Sal Semino, and it omitted George Holland. Sal hasn't been on the Board for a little while, and George Holland has. So, I wanted to say that this Board has made that notation in appointments and reappointments, and I don't think there are any other changes. You know, this isn't the time to discuss Industrial Development Commission, but I'm going to ask that in a future meeting, one of the Members consider taking a swing at the plate to see what we can do to invigorate that committee. I've been doing that for a period of time, and there doesn't seem to be a whole lot coming from that committee. So, let's, we should look to find out what we can do and how we can help. So, with that, Will, you want to take first page?
Yeah, that's great. I just wanted to make sure that we did, obviously, read them all, just so people know who's serving on these.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint Rochelle Thompson, Animal Control.
That's to period up, for 4/30/20. Go ahead.
Keith Haynes, Assistant Animal Control Officer, expiring 4/30/20/20.
Okay.
Leonard C. Oliveri, Fair Housing Director, expiring 6/30/20/20. William J. Toohey, Jr., as Emergency Management Director, expiring 6/30/20/20. And George Cleveland, Deputy Director, 6/30/20/20.
Okay, so why don't we just break... So why don't we just break this up? There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I would second that.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, Commission on Disability?
Commission on Disability, three-year terms, Rachel Hazer, Dino Di Bartolomeus, and Julie Gonzalez, all expiring 6/30/2022.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have Conservation Commission?
For three-year terms, Joseph P. Achili and Paul J. Brazza, expiring 6/30/2022.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, Council on Aging?
Three-year terms, Francis X. Small, Thomas O'Laughlin, and Edwin Roth, all expiring 6/30/2022.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Fair Housing Committee?
Make a motion to appoint Leonard Oliveri, John Morty, Brian Falk, and Justin Dulac, all expiring June 30th, 2020.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, Finance Committee?
Make a motion to reappoint Aldo Chaky, Michael Soers, Charles Mikulozovich, sorry, Chuck, and Alberto Correa. And for the vacancy, I'd like to appoint Brant Hornberger, all expiring June 30th, 2022.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I'd also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, Geriatric Authority of Milford?
For three-year term, I'll make a motion to appoint Dr. Joseph Lopes and George V. Holland Jr., all expiring 6/30/2022.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have Historical Commission?
For a three-year term, I'd like to reappoint Ann LaMontaigne and Robert Samiagio, all expiring June 30th, 2022.
All right, Mike, if you could take second page?
I would second that motion.
I'd also vote in favor, that's unanimous.
I would make a motion that we reappoint to the Industrial Development Commission, Stephen Borg, Ryan P. Avery, and Thomas Wesley, all terms expiring 6/30/22.
Motion?
Second?
I also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Milford Cultural Council, next?
I would make a motion that we reappoint to the Milford Cultural Council, Brian Cole, Molly Oger, Jerry Edmonds, Michael Lalain, Patricia Solomon, Nicole Romigol, sorry, Romigolli, and Michael Visconti, all expiring on June 30th, 2022.
Do you have a motion?
Second?
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have Personnel Board?
I would make a motion that we reappoint Teresa Persisco, Esquire, to the Personnel Board, term expiring June 30th, 2022.
Second?
I'd also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have Register of Voters?
I would make a motion that we reappoint to the Register of Voters Geraldine Kincaid to a term that expires June 30th, 2022.
And I'm going to abstain.
I'll vote in favor, that's, I'll second the motion and vote in favor. That's two in favor and one abstention. Next, we have Zoning Board of Appeals?
I would make a motion that we reappoint to the Zoning Board of Appeals David R. Consigli and Christopher Burns. David Consigli's term expires June 30th, 2024. Christopher Burns' term expires June 30th, 2022.
Second that?
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have Milford Youth Commission?
I would make a motion that we reappoint to the Milford Youth Commission Susan Salamoni, Lisa White, and Ronald Taylor, all terms expiring June 30th, 2022.
I'll second that.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If we can, there's a vacancy on the Milford Cultural Council?
Okay. Yes, there is.
Going through everything, and I was reached out some time ago, when there wasn't a vacancy, by Ms. Jenny Lyons, who I'd like to make a motion to appoint. If you know Jenny, she's very involved with all the schools. She's been around a long time. She's a Milford native and just a really good person, and anything she's a part of, she goes 100%. So I'd like to make a motion to fill that vacancy.
Is there a second?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. That's for the vacancy on the cultural.
I'm sorry, and that also expires June 30th, 2022. Sorry.
Okay. Good. All right. Nice work, guys. Next, we have Acceptance of Gifts. And I want to make a note of something before we move on, we get through these applications quite a bit, which is a good sign. Apologize, just a moment. So there's one omission in the notes. There was also a, on your front page, there was also a donation from Joe and Renee, Joe Calery and Renee, as you lay. It's indicated on the back page of your packet from that, $100 donation. I just didn't want you to go to the front page, accept these gifts, and miss that there was another $100 donation included. So I'll reach the members to see if...
Mr. Chairman, I'll gladly make a motion to accept the four contributions to the Milford 4th of July Parade Committee totaling $650. It's $500 from the Massachusetts Correctional Officers Federal Union, $50 from the Law Offices of Michael Kaplan, $100 from Combs Salon, and $100 from Joe Calery and Renee, as you lay.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'd also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Okay. Town Treasurer has requested that the board approve short-term borrowing. I'll read the note from the Town Treasurer's office, and specifically Christopher Pillar, the Town Treasurer. Dear Chairman Buckley, attach, shall find a short-term bond for the Woodland School. We are awaiting final reimbursement from the MSBA. That's the Massachusetts School Building Assistance Program, for those who don't know the acronym. Our account is in deficit, and in order to avoid a direct hit to the free cash, we bonded The term of the bond is three months and has an interest rate of 2%. This will cost the town $6,567.81 in interest. Again, this was anticipated by the financial team. We are currently working with MSBA on a date as to expect final payment. The amount of the final payment due to the town of Milford is approximately $1,500,000. So, you know, to put in general terms, we've been waiting for MSBA reimbursement for quite a while. We have really no alternative but to go out and bond this while we work with the MSBA to see if there's any issues. Right now, last I heard, we don't know of any issues or concerns. It's just delayed in the process in Boston.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to authorize the Treasurer to take out the short-term bond for $1,343,415.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, Town Administrator, Rick, you indicated that from, I'm going to guess, the financial team, that we make the following transfers. As is customary, there are some line item transfers that happen at the end of the year in order to balance accounts. I'm going to read the amount from the Assessor's Office. It's $5,121 from the school, tech services, personnel services, $4,500. Town accountant, short-term interest, $800, and long-term interest, it's a transfer from short-term interest, $1. So we have a very small number when we look at, when we look at a hundred-plus-million-dollar budget, we have a very small number of line item transfers to make the, to make the accounts balanced properly, and these were anticipated. These aren't expenditures where we didn't pay attention to the end of the year. It just requires transfers in order to make the accounts whole.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll gladly make the motion to approve the transfers. Is it stated?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman. Even the dollar.
Even the dollar. I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Is there any other new business from the board members? Will, I'll go to you first.
Yes, actually, I do. I'm not sure. I'm sure as colleagues of the board and the Town Administrator saw an article, at least in the Patch, I don't know if it was in the Milford Daily News or not, but there was an issue stemming from the Main Street branch or location of the Dunkin' Donuts, where a patron was going through the drive-thru, ended up being verbally accosted there, ended up being physically accosted by that person quite seriously down at the Sacred Heart parking lot. The man is a surviving cancer patient and one of our retired firefighters. Luckily, people ended up coming to his aid after a struggle. He's at the hospital today getting CAT scans and things of that nature, pretty serious injuries. I called, we talked today, I just wanted to check on him. There seemed to be, the reason I bring this up tonight is because there seemed to be some confusion that Dunkin' Donuts from the staff, when he repeatedly asked for them to call 911, no calls were made. I think, Rick, I would like, at the very least, you to reach out to Dunkin' Donuts if we can. All of our businesses, I think, through Tom O'Laughlin as well as Chiefs even before him, these businesses in town know how comfortable it is and how we encourage them to call the police and to do so. So if it's, if it's staff training, anything that needs to take place, but that just really struck me. You know, I don't know all the details, but I do know that one of our retirees did end up hurt, and they're going back to court. There's several charges. He also resisted with the police. So I just want to make sure that any of our local businesses are not only comfortable but encouraged to call the police. We certainly don't, and it's been some years, way before I got on, Bill, I think it was probably the beginning of your tenure on the board, that the Board of Selectmen stopped penalizing restaurants, bar owners, any license holders
Making calls.
For making phone calls, because we didn't want things handled in a manner they shouldn't be. So sometimes it's, you know, it can be young people that don't know what to do. It could be someone who panicked, I'm not sure. There's three sides to every story, but all I know is, in this case, one of our retirees, who's in ill health anyway, ended up in a physical altercation on the ground and pretty hurt.
Yeah, and, you know, even if we're, even if through the investigative process, persons charged and convicted, that doesn't take away that the damage done by injury, and nobody's whole after that. And so, you know, I would agree with you. And Rick, if you could look into it and find out what might have happened.
And Rick, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I'd asked through you that if, you know, if there's something we need to talk about, if the owners want to come in or the managers and have a conversation, I'd be more than happy to chat with them publicly.
All right. We'll go based on your recommendation, Rick, and if you could get us to the bottom of that story, that would be helpful. Mike, anything in new business?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Next, we have correspondence. We have resignation from the Personnel Board, I'm sorry, Milford Retirement Board. And we, I'm going to read that letter. Mike DiOrio, who's been on the Personnel Board for a very long time, advising the board that as of June 30th, 2019, he's going to resign from the Board of Selectmen's appointed member to the Milford Retirement Board. We also have a letter from Zachary Taylor, our Finance Director, to Rick and the Board of Selectmen. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mike DiOrio for his many years of faithful service to the Retirement Board. He brought with him a lot of history and knowledge that the board will certainly miss. In light of this now open Milford Board of Selectmen appointed slot, I would like to strongly recommend Town Treasurer Chris Pillar be appointed effective July 1st, 2019. Chris is genuinely interested in the board and has the ideal financial background to benefit the board. Through his position, the Town Treasurer, Chris is familiar with the board's bank accounts and retirement payroll. Further, as we all know, Milford performs complete in-house payroll. Many decisions of the Retirement Board have a direct impact on how payroll is performed. Therefore, I believe it not only makes sense to appoint the Town Treasurer to the Retirement Board, it's close to critical. So with that, I'll reach out to the members of the board and see what your thoughts are.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sad to see Mike DiOrio go. He's an expert in municipal government, as far as I'm concerned, and has certainly advised me many times over the years, so I'm sad to see him go. But I also think appointing Chris Pillar is the next best thing. He's very familiar with that. Obviously, he reports to Zach. Zach is recommending him as well. Rick, any thoughts, if I can ask?
I would also...
You guys, you're also a member of that.
I am also a member of the Retirement Board. I would also recommend, if the board's so inclined to appoint Chris Pillar as a member.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Chris Pillar to the Retirement Board.
Okay. Is there a second?
Before I second that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make sure that we send a nice letter to Mike DiOrio for his years of service. He will be definitely missed. Mike's a great advocate of the town of Milford, and he surely will be missed, and I would second the motion to appoint. I think it's a perfect segue to put Chris on the Retirement Board.
Yeah, I would agree with the board members and say that, you know, Mike has certainly been an asset over the years in his many positions and roles, certainly on the Retirement Board, so it's sad to see him go. And we say, we say that, and we accept his resignation with regret. And in that motion, we'll also appoint Chris Pillar effective July 1st, 2019, to fill that vacancy. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
You all set, Rick?
Yes, I'm good. Yes, I'm sorry. Yep.
Any other correspondence from the members of the board? Will?
None for me.
Mike?
No, sir.
Okay. I have two pieces of correspondence, one I want to read, having to do with the Milford Fire Department. Chief Tuohy reached out to us, and he says, "Dear Honorable Board, I would like to bring to your attention the fine work being done by our new Human Resources Director, Maureen Griffin. When I first met Maureen last year, she offered to help us with anything we needed. In January, I took her on our offer and asked her to review our current employment application. She not only reviewed it, she redesigned it and had it cleared by Town Council. Recently, I invited her to sit in on interviews with potential candidates for firefighter positions that we will be opening in July. It was so helpful to have someone with us who has as much interviewing experience as Maureen. We don't do it often enough to become proficient at it at the Fire Department, but Maureen added a new perspective for our interviews. She went so far as to tailor questions to each candidate after reviewing their applications and was great at interacting with each one. I would like to thank her for assistance that she has given the Fire Department, look forward to working with her in the future." You know, it was very kind of Chief Tuohy to pen this letter, to take the time to do that. I've heard many similar comments from various members of the community, employees, department heads, and here's another case of that, and we thank Bill for taking the time to do that. And we also want to take the time to thank Maureen for the feedback she's receiving in a very short period of time. She's added a great deal of value, and, you know, I think it once again illustrates why that can be so helpful, a position.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I just request that Maureen not only get a copy of that, but she puts that in her own personnel file?
Yeah, you're right. Along with anything else you might want to. No, but, no, that's a great point. Should be in her personnel file so that it just doesn't end here, because, you know, she, really, it's a balancing act, right? She's often in between employees in difficult situations and department heads, and it's not always going to please everyone, so it's nice to have feedback like this in the file should somebody not be so pleased at some point down the road. It's a hard position.
I think it's valid, the statement that you made, Mr. Chairman, is what she's accomplished in such a short amount of time is amazing, amazing.
Next, related to correspondence, the board received a packet as it relates to Route 109, dedicated left turns onto Beaver Street. So if you're traveling westbound on Route 109 and you want to turn into Stop &amp; Shop, we know what some, some members of the public are doing. They're turning into, do not enter, and it's creating accidents. They're crossing three or four lanes. The only other alternative from 109 is to take your best shot at an opening, and hopefully that opening is large enough for you to get through. This board, many months ago, has asked Town Engineer Mike Dean along with Town Administrator Rick Vilani to look into the possibility of a dedicated left-hand turn arrow on the westbound on the westbound lane of one oh nine, turning in towards Burger King and Stop and Shop. You've received a packet, you've got an update. And through the Board, what I'd like to do is now I'd like to reach out to our State Representative, the State Senator. And I'd ask Mike to look to accelerate the request. There's a lot happening on that intersection. And the State is talking about the possibility of making Beaver Street a two-way street. And here's my concern, Rick. We could be two to three years away from a final solution that would allow Beaver Street and some reconfigured intersection. What I'd like to do is accelerate and work with the, accelerate our request and you know, indicate to both our State Rep and our State Senator, along with District Three of the Department of Transportation, that the public, based on various number of accidents, and we can get that data from the Police Department, is in imminent risk in the absence of a dedicated turn lane. This is a paramount safety concern. And we'd like to see if they can accelerate our request and put this on a fast track. The feedback we got from our Town Engineer gave us a complete history on it. But we didn't have a path, we still don't have a path forward. And people are going to be making that, and what I don't wanna do is talk about how we send out our condolences to family members of somebody that was injured or killed at that intersection or trying to get into that stop and shop. It's a matter of time. It's not a question of if it's going to happen, it's when it's gonna happen. There are lots of accidents at that, that area and that intersection, so. I don't know what the process is with the State to escalate and to get something fast-tracked, that's a serious public safety issue, but I wanna get that information out to our State Rep and State Senator and to Mike. And if this isn't a call every week to District Three to find out what the status is, then I'd like some other process. And if it requires face-to-face meetings with the Board of Selectmen, or if it requires that Mike Dean, once a week, go down and camp out in Worcester on District Three's desk, somebody's desk, that's okay with me too. I wanna get any thoughts or comments that the Board had, I know you all had an opportunity to review that packet, so.
No, I think you're covering all the bases, I think legislative pressure is along with local is gonna make a big difference in this. That's the feedback some of us have, have received pretty, pretty directly, quite honestly. This is something that's been talked about for many, many years. Actually, I think the last time it was really pushed, Marie Parenti was our State Representative, so we're going back some years. So, I think now that we've asked our legislators to get on it, I think they'll continue to apply pressure. I think you bringing it up tonight will support that even more so.
Okay.
So, I think that's enough, many, enough years have gone by about talking about it and now it's even more built up and more expanded down there, so.
Yeah, and people can't get into it.
Nope.
Not see, not from one oh nine, especially westbound. Mike?
And I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, it definitely needs to be escalated, and I'll tell you why, we've actually made this, not we, meaning the construction of the Plaza has made the, the situation even worse because of the way that they designed that island in the middle. People still wanna make the left-hand turn, that used to be the big open driveway going into the old Kmart Plaza. Now they gotta negotiate around that island and to your point, first of all, you're trying to negotiate the cars that are coming through the traffic light, do you have a gap big enough to get in, and now you gotta negotiate around that island. And you're a hundred percent right, somebody's gonna be seriously hurt.
And you were right the first time when you said we. Because, yes, it was the developer, but the developer's submission went through our planning review process, that island existed as part of the plan. They're in compliance with the plan and it's not working.
Right.
And people are at risk. So, we've gotta fix it. Our planning process and review process, like any other community, is not a perfect process, and when we see things that need adjustment, we need to be better at correcting concerns that result in safety issues. There isn't, there isn't anything that we do that's more important than the safety. Right?
Absolutely.
You know, we took a lot of votes to do a lot of things tonight. But we still don't have resolution some two years later on that one oh nine and the dedicated, the request for a dedicated left, so. A little bit of frustration, but it's a frustration with the process that I hope there's what's communicated is the Board is less tolerant to being frustrated and more tolerant to, more interested in seeing the action, and so let's see if we can escalate. All right, Rick, any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. You and I have talked how many times, right?
So we've talked a lot about this over the time, yeah, and so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to add on to something you said regarding the things that we voted on tonight, you know, we've had a year full of a lot of distractions and a lot of different things that we didn't necessarily sign up for when you wanna serve your town and be a Selectman. But I gotta tell you, tonight, I'm really proud of a lot of, we did a lot of positive stuff tonight.
We did.
Just one meeting and it feels good, we're, we're making decisions for the betterment of the town and I just wanted to acknowledge that, you had just mentioned that, whether it's the parade, whether it's, you know, our, our issues that we decided to take up today, we have good people retiring and resigning, making time for their families after years and years of service, and we're appointing people that wanna serve and be a part of it and, you know, it's just, you know, it's a lot of good stuff tonight, so it's a very positive meeting and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Will. Okay. With that, we have no more correspondence. So, we do have an executive session planned for the purposes of meeting with Town Council regarding collective bargaining related to the Fire Department and with Attorney Patrick Holland. There's also Town Council working on a case related to arbitration. So what I'll do is I'll accept a motion to go into executive session for the purposes that I've indicated.
So moved.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I'd also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Now I'll go to a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. And the Board will not be returning to open session following this executive session. Thank you very much and good evening.